For April the 10th, please stand as Commissioner Dorr will lead us in our invocation and Commissioner Cruz will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we just truly thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you for our blessings, Lord. We thank you that we could be here to make plans for this county. Give us knowledge and wisdom that we may do the right things and be with us as we leave to make our way back home. We ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioners. Brings us to establish some form. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. So we do have a form. Any changes to the agenda, Nikki?
No, sir.
Seeing none, do I have a motion approved as presented?
Motion is approved.
Okay. We have a motion in the second.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Our agenda is approved. Nikki, that brings us to the Comprehensive Plan Kickoff. I'll let you take over and introduce our special guests and we'll turn the floor over to them.
Right, absolutely. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Comprehensive Plan Kickoff this evening. Of course, tonight, we have two representatives, Todd Fortune and Lauren from Commonwealth Regional Council, who will be assisting the county in regards to the Comprehensive Plan update. Todd is with us this evening and he is going to help lay the groundwork for what the next few months will look like regarding input from the Planning Commission, Board of Supervisors, town meetings, input from the citizens as a whole, and just the process to that update moving forward. So Todd, the floor is yours and we do have your presentation ready when you're ready.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Ooh. Can you still hear me? Sorry. Either my voice carries or these mics are real sensitive. Okay, yeah, the purpose of tonight's meeting is basically just to walk you through the process for updating the comp plan. As Nikki mentioned, we've been tabbed to assist the county with an update of the comp plan. This process, we envision taking 18 months or up to 18 months, depending on how the process goes. Basically, what you see on the screen is just the agenda, what we're going to cover tonight. That agenda actually looks worse than it is. It's, there's a lot of bullet points on it, but I suspect we can go through these in fairly quick order. The first thing you have is the Code of Virginia elements of a comprehensive plan. This is not meant to be all-inclusive for what is in the code regarding comprehensive plans. This is a kind of a thumbnail to cover some of the more important points. The first bullet point just talks about where the section of the code that talks about how the plan is done. Of course, it's up to the local planning commission. We're under contract with the county, but we're basically working for you. The planning commission makes the recommendation to the board on adopting the plan and then the board adopts it. Yes, sir. I've got nothing on my screen. Can we? Todd, yeah. Yes, Todd. Fortune, yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is just a PowerPoint that we, a brief PowerPoint. You can go ahead and page down if you want. And I mentioned this already, we're under contract with the county to assist. We expect this process to take 18 months and we'll be working directly with the planning commission. And one of the logistics I want to discuss with the group, we've done, we've actually are working on two other comp plans right now with a third about to start later this year, and it usually depends on the locality. With one county, we work with the entire planning commission. With another county, their planning commission was so large that they appointed a working committee. So it's really up to this group what they want to do. This group looks small enough, we could probably just work with the whole planning commission.
Yeah, I guess what the committee members would like.
Okay. Okay. You can go ahead and page down, Jamie. So the last plan, if memory serves, was updated in 2015. So we're going to basically go by, through the plan, section by section. We're going to draft a new plan for you. It's going to include text. It's actually also going to include tables, graphs, charts, GIS maps. You see, we mentioned the citizen survey and community meeting down at the bottom. In the past, last time we did Buckingham County's plan, we did the surveys first and the community meetings second. The last three comprehensive plans we've done, we've switched it around. And we've actually found it works better to do the community meeting first. Because then you get some stuff from the community meeting that we can use in the surveys. So unless the group has an objection, we propose doing the community meeting first and then doing the surveys afterward. Yes. Yes. Sorry. Go ahead, Jamie. Okay, here are the, some of the, what the Code of Virginia has to say about the comprehensive plan. I mentioned the first section, 15.2-2223. Again, this will come from the planning commission to the board, and I know you were here last time, so you know the process well. And then the board will adopt it. That third bullet point is important. There's a transportation plan. We're going to work directly with VDOT and we still, and we're still going to have the planning commission gauge and providing input, but just be aware that as far as the transportation section, a lot of the data is going to come from VDOT. We plan to have a lot of maps as part of the transportation section. And then going on down, maps, plots, charts, and a script of matter. The first section of the comp plan goes into the process and the requirements, at least the way we write them up. The second section gets into your demographics. That's, you know, population, and then all your race, age. Then it gets into education, commuting patterns, employment, and so forth. Then Section 3 covers transportation. We'll also, we'll cover housing in there. Also talk about the county's natural resources and such. The bottom bullet point, talking about affordable housing, that is, that's a requirement in the code that you address affordable housing. And that can be addressed in a couple of places. What we've been doing for the last few comp plans we've worked on is we have a section called Special Policy Areas, and then we have a separate Goals, Objectives, and Strategies. And for those of you familiar with comp plans, you probably know what Goals, Objectives, and Strategies are. Special Policy Areas will take some of those policy areas that we think need more attention than your Goals, Objectives, and Strategies. And those are usually identified through the community meetings and the surveys. But affordable housing, we can address affordable housing in those areas mainly. So go ahead and scroll down, Jamie. Urban development areas, don't let that term fool you or overwhelm you. Basically, you want, what we would do is work with the county to identify growth areas in the comp plan. I know the last plan has them identified already, so the question becomes, do you want to tweak those? Do you want to keep them? Do you want to put in new ones or take some out? And we'll get to that later on. The land use section of the plan comes a little bit later on. That's what, when we say we're developing areas, we're talking about growth areas, what we're talking about. Broadband, we'll probably discuss in the comp plan. That's been a big issue. Methods of implementation, we do include an implementation plan at the last, the last section of the plan. That final bullet point, five years is a requirement, but you don't have to wait five years. One of the localities we're working with now, they're, what they're considering doing after their plan, this plan is finished, is at least the part that deals with renewable energy, they would review it more often in five years. You don't have to wait five years, that's just what's required. You can go ahead, Jamie. So as far as the current plan, I don't know, I know you're familiar with the current plan. I don't know if any of the rest of you are, but we do want to hear at some point, if not tonight, in a future meeting, what you like and don't like about the current comp plan. And I don't know if we want to have that discussion tonight.
It might be helpful, Todd, if you could just sort of give a general, not on the likes and dislikes, but just sort of what the comprehensive plan is. It's more of a framework that the county works within.
Well, that's-
Because we've got a lot of new members on-
That's actually an important point. Your, the way we put it in layman's terms, your comp plan is your guide, your ordinances are your tools. You want the two to be in sync. The comp plan's going to be more of a broad brush where your ordinances get into the weeds. But again, you're still going to want them to be in sync. For instance, probably the land use plan is your best example. When you identify your growth areas, you identify the different types of use. You're not going to get into that much detail on the comp plan, but you still want your future land use map when you go to adjust your ordinances, your zoning ordinance. Remind me, does Buckingham have a subdivision ordinance? So when you go to adjust your ordinances, you want to be sure that what you do-
They match.
They don't, yeah, they match. Yeah, exactly. They don't run afoul of one another, for lack of a better word. But like I said, the first three sections of the comp plan, the first section just goes into the process. The next two sections are real data intensive. It's really when you get to the land use, your special policy areas, your goals, objectives, and strategies, that it gets real involved. That pretty much-
Yeah, I think that's, gets a pretty good overview.
This is what we're proposing. Now, the phases are not your actual sections. The phases are kind of how we're going to do this. Well, what we hope to do is provide your Section 1. And again, Section 1 is just going to talk about what the Code of Virginia covers and talk about the process. But then Section 2 is your demographics. And then Section 3 is your community resources, which we're calling Phase 2. This is just, this is an outline of how we want to present everything to you. And what we're going to do is we're going to present these to you at work sessions, and we're going to want the group to look at it, to give us feedback, tell us what you like, what you want to see changed, and et cetera. Again, we want, we want to have this, have you in a position where we have a document that you're comfortable with proposing to the Board of Supervisors and asking them to adopt it. Again, we have a tentative schedule of meetings and, you know, Nikki, did everyone get hard copies of?
I did not.
Okay. Okay, so hopefully, we can pull it up in a minute. We can, we have a tentative schedule of meetings, which starts with tonight's meeting. And basically, we're proposing having meetings monthly through September of next year, which is how you get to your 18 months. But we start off with tonight's meeting, then we get into preparing for the community meeting, and then after that, get into the surveys, and then start to present sections of the plan to the group for review and comment. Did Jamie have the actual tentative schedule of meetings up on his screen?
That was correct.
So yeah, go back, go back, go down one real quick. Yeah, so I talked about the surveys and the community meetings. What we're proposing to do next month is we want to, we want to kind of hash out the community meeting with the group. We want, want to have some, some draft presentation materials and kind of give us an outline for how we want the community meeting to go, and then we would also discuss location, time, et cetera.
As far as the surveys, those are, if I recall, they're sent out to certain stakeholders. And then also, you can put them in businesses where people can pick them up and-
What they did, what we did last time, they were, they were presented to certain businesses, and I think you're right, we did ask certain stakeholders to fill one out, too.
And you try to, if I recall, don't we try to collect all those prior to the, to the meeting, correct?
Well-
If possible.
The last time we did that, remember, last time we did the surveys first.
Right.
So this time, we-
We'll do the meeting first.
We'll do the meeting first, yeah. But you're right, that is how we did it last time, yeah.
Well, what you intend then is to do this community meeting with stakeholders, or is it?
It's going to be, it's going to be for the public. It's going to be for county citizens.
So it'll be open to the public?
Yes.
I got it, okay.
So we're going to need a location that could potentially hold a big crowd.
Okay, I understand.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. Who, when you're talking stakeholders, who are you speaking of?
Well, we're talking about folks like the Chamber of Commerce, local businesses, 4H, groups like that.
Usually your stakeholders are business people or someone that has a contact that could probably reach other people. Only what you're trying to do, because you're trying to get the word out and the surveys out.
Okay, would that include churches, then? Would that include churches?
It could.
It could, yeah.
Is there, is there a ministerial group in the county that could be reached out to as a point of contact for churches?
I would say your pastors.
Well.
Yeah.
That's one, but there's, and I'm vice president of the NAACP, and I think the NAACP would certainly be a stakeholder in any comprehensive plan. And that's why I was asking, who were the stakeholders? And there are other organizations. I'm looking at Donna, and she's a member of a sorority, Alpha Kappa, Alpha, excuse me, my sister would get me. But, so there are sororities and fraternities who also would be, I would consider them stakeholders. And that, that's why I was like, who are the stakeholders?
It's usually anybody that can, sort of, I guess the best way to frame it, an influencer would be able to have the contacts with the people who know.
She was just in the paper. She was just in the archival herald with an activity for the community. So she also sits on the board with, over at this extension office with Habitat for Humanity. So I, they're, so I think we need to clarify who the stakeholders are.
Well, normally, you create a list anyway.
Okay, then we need-
We can, and we can do that. We can work with you to develop a list.
And when it started the process.
And start the, right.
But don't we usually do a digital, like last time we did one, like our last comp plan, we also sent out a digital survey that was available to the public. So we can post it on your Facebook page or provide it on your website. But I get what you're saying.
Now, the last one we did, I think we did, it was digital, but the one, the other county we're working with, we did both.
Oh, you did both, okay.
We did both. Yeah.
I would say, I would say probably that would be an effective way to reach in Buckingham also.
No, no, you're right.
You would need to do both in Buckingham because we're, we still don't have internet service throughout the county. So you'd need to do both in order to do that.
And provide, like, like you said, digital surveys, but also like paper surveys and certain places that you'd select, yeah.
Paper surveys. And one of our ways of communication, putting a flyer in the post office.
Does the post office allow that?
No, I didn't think-
Here we do. They are up. They are up.
I'm not sure anymore.
I'm not sure.
That's the reason I was asking, because-
If you-
Things are a little different now.
If you call the U.S. Postal Service in DC, I'm sure they may have a different answer. But if you go to any of our local post offices, wherever you can put up a flyer, there's a flyer.
Okay.
Flyers and post offices.
It was rural, and that needs to be taken into consideration in how we communicate.
Understood.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So the idea is that the next meeting next month, we're going to hash out that particular aspect? In other words, who, who are we going to get these surveys or how are you going to do this? Is that what we're doing next?
Well, we're going to do the community meeting, and we could, I guess we could also do the surveys at the same time, at least have those ready.
I'm not asking if you do the survey. Are you, are we going to talk methods or are we actually going to do something?
No, we'll talk methods.
Okay, so we're going to talk the methods of actually getting these surveys done?
Yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, that's-
That's one of the things.
That's what I'm hearing. I mean, my intent was to talk about the methods for that and also the logistics for the community meeting. Which leads to my next question, which is about meetings. This is the, I believe, second Monday of the month. Is this the, is this the time of the month where the group wants to meet?
It's going to be kind of tough because you've got the Board of Supervisors meeting. We actually got bumped.
Okay.
Typical work sessions are held on the third Monday of each month, Todd.
Which would be, next week would be, next month would be the 15th. Okay. So we're planning on the 16th, I'm sorry, the 15th at 6:00 PM for the next work session. We're going to discuss logistics for the community meeting. We're going to talk about distribution methods for the surveys.
That is, excuse me.
Yes.
The 15th is actually not the greatest day. We have a class.
Oh, the-
We're at VCU, right. We have a class. That's our class, 15th and 16th.
It is. It's over at, what, 3:00, 4:00?
Over at VCU. VCU.
An effort to try to make, keep these on the correct schedule of a work session, we could do one of two things. Since we have these dates already on our master schedule that were approved at the beginning of the year, we may possibly, with a recommendation by our chairman or someone on the Planning Commission, and a vote, may move this by general consensus or vote to a different time, to 7:00 PM, if that would help.
That was, be my suggestion, if I would give you time to get from Richmond back.
We varied this month because of the budget hearings and trying to share a schedule and make sure that the Board of Supervisors has the time that they need in the month of April to, you know, keep the county budget going. So we do have a bit of a variance this month, and then, of course, the task that you all have had with the consideration of metallic mining. But it would, you know, be all best efforts to maintain to our schedule as much as possible in the months moving forward.
Understand. Todd, if it was moved back to 7:00 o'clock, would that affect you?
I live 15 minutes away. You have a problem with 7:00 PM meeting?
No, yeah, I'm good.
I mean, I live north of Dillon, so I'm local.
Those would have to be all-
No, I think you'd need to check with the other people who attended the class, if they can make it. I wouldn't want to jump out and haul it. Pardon?
I think we could still be here by 6:00. Down there, even at 4:00, it's still about an hour and a half.
Well, I'm going to let y'all discuss and make the call. If you think-
I don't care either way.
If you think 6:00 is fine, we'll go with that. If you, I just don't want to push you to get back, is what I'm getting at. You never know what the traffic's going to be like.
You serving dinner for us? Are you serving dinner for us?
You don't want me to serve.
No, but I'm just saying, I'm just looking at the closeness of the time. We will be in class supposedly all day. Roll back here to sit in a work session. And if we can push it.
I'm okay with 7:00, I don't care.
7:00 would work?
I'm, I'm fine with either.
Or if 6:00 works for y'all.
Okay, I'd prefer 7:00. I think that gives us a-
That'll give you a little leet time to wind down, too.
Okay.
If Todd, that's all right with y'all, that's what we're going to do, move it back to 7:00.
On 7:00 on the 15th.
What is the length of that meeting you just explained?
Honestly, I don't expect it to go more than an hour.
Okay, all right. Because they will, if I already had a full day, so.
Right.
Being educated.
Yeah, really, the, the, these first few meetings, I don't expect to run that long. Once we get into actually presenting sections of the plan for the group, they could get a little bit longer.
Okay. So we're going to try, I assume, Nikki, to stay on schedule. We'll try to do every work session every month, is what you're indicating. Okay.
It'd be on the 15th, or the third Monday, is that the idea? The third Monday of every-
It's the third Monday for work sessions, yes, sir, in a typical situation. And then our meetings fall on the fourth Monday. And Todd, I do have a question for you. You've got the community meeting in June.
Yep.
Is there a code requirement for the number of days? How do we advertise that? Where should that be held?
No, because it's not, it's not a formal public hearing. It's just a community meeting. We still want to advertise, you're right. Or at least put a PSA. If the paper will let us do a PSA or community brief, that way it'll, it'll let you avoid having to pay to put something in the paper. But you're right, you do want to announce it in the paper and anywhere else that you want to get the word out. But no, it's not required. But you do, but you, but you want to, but you don't have to.
I'll discuss with Carl the best meeting places for that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll want to, yeah. So I think, we've pretty much covered what I had on my list to cover. Does anybody, yeah, that's our tentative schedule of meetings that Jamie and Nikki just pulled up. That is, of course, subject to change, but that's what we're, we're hoping for. So one tweak, next month, when it says May, we say discuss community meeting. We should say, we'll say discuss community meeting and survey methods of distribution. We'll go ahead and knock, discuss both of those in May. And we'll proceed with a community meeting in June, and then come back the following month with a community meeting summary, and begin work on the actual survey instrument. So we'll have that out, or have that ready to get out. Any questions from the group?
Question, do you, you'll head up the community meeting? I mean, you'll, you'll-
Yes.
Okay, fine, thank you.
Any other questions from the group?
I have one, I guess.
Yeah, go ahead.
What about communication? Is there ongoing communication between you and the commission members? I mean, do we need to give you email addresses? Is there some sort of a mailing? What do we, how do we keep in touch? Or is it even necessary?
We can do this one of two ways. Either you can go through the county, or I can give you all business cards.
What do you normally do?
Normally, we do everything through the county staff.
All right.
And they, they'll, they'll submit everything out to the group.
That's fine with me.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions for Todd?
And by the way, I hope, I hope the group doesn't mind. I'll, I'll be here in person for all the meetings unless something comes up. Lauren's coming from distance. Is there a way for her to participate remotely?
Yes, absolutely.
I mean, I'm not wanting to speak for you, but there might be, I'm thinking next month, you, because she, you're, you're over an hour away.
Up to you. I mean, our office isn't that far away, so.
Either way, just kind of-
We'll just see how it goes.
Okay.
Thank you, Nikki.
But yeah, I'll, I'll plan on being here in person. But I just kind of wanted to throw that out there, just because of where she is, might participate remotely occasionally. Yeah. All right. Any other questions from the group?
I believe so, Todd.
Okay.
All right, appreciate it. Look forward to working with you.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you. I guess the agenda is, do you have anything else, Nikki, for us?
I don't have anything else, other than I would just like to thank each of you for your participation and your willingness to come for the comp plan kickoff, since I know that for the majority of everyone, other than our, our chairman, has, has not had the opportunity to participate in a comprehensive plan review and update. I'd also like to throw out that, as has been mentioned here tonight, next Monday would typically be our work session, but we understand that the board has an important meeting on the 17th, so we will have our work session on the 19th, which has a couple of different things on the agenda. And then we will fall back into our regularly scheduled meeting plan on the 24th for our regular planning commission meeting. So next Wednesday.
The work, course of work session on the 19th is a continuation of the gold mine, metallic mining.
And also on the 24th, the board will be meeting here in this room at 6:00 PM. They, they're, the anticipation would be that they would be voting on the budget. So we will just have our meeting immediately following the board's assessment that evening, but we will still plan to be here at 6:00 PM on the 24th.
Very good. Commissioners, anybody have anything they want to express at this time? All right, seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Thank you.
Question in a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, our work session is adjourned.